It says on YouTube.
Ready?
Setting up webinar. Yes, you're good to go.
Right. I'd like to call the meeting of Northampton Township Board of Supervisors for Wednesday, January 27th, 2021 to order. We'll start out with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. The flags are behind me. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I just want to remind the public that we have the ability to comment two times tonight, one on agenda items, which would be early in the meeting, and then one at the end of the meeting, which is open public comment. If you'd like to comment on agenda items, please email publiccomment@nhtwp.org. Put in the subject line, the agenda item you'd like to comment on, and your name and address in the body of the email for the record. If you choose not, if you don't want to comment via audio, you're okay to write a 300-word or less comment, which I will read aloud for the record. The same thing will happen later in the meeting. If you'd like to comment, a public comment at the end of the meeting, please send an email to publiccomment@nhtwp.org. You don't have to put anything in the subject, but please put your name and address in the body of the email for the record. So tonight, we do have one short special presentation. And as you know, in past years, we have supported the Adopt a Hydrant Fire Hydrant program. And that program just asks residents to take care of the fire hydrant that's closest to their house when it snows. By digging out the fire hydrant in advance of any emergency, it can save the fire department very valuable time if there's a fire in your neighborhood, so the firefighters can hook up the hoses right away and get much-needed water onto the fire. If you don't dig out your fire hydrant and it's buried, it could take up to 10 extra minutes for the fire department to locate and ultimately dig out the hydrant. So we have a very successful program in Northampton Township. Many people do dig out the hydrants in their neighborhoods, so thank you very much for that. It does help everybody's safety. And part of the program is to have a little fun. We ask that you can send an email with a picture of whoever took care of the adopted the hydrant and took care of it to chief, the fire chief, at ntvfc.org, and we randomly pick a winner. So we did get a bunch of photos. Very nice. Thank you all for the participation and keeping your community safe. And this month, I'm happy to report, or this last snowstorm, I'm happy to report that Eddie Hearn of Richborough was the winner of a $25 gift card for his efforts in digging out the fire hydrant. There's Eddie. I'm not sure if he's on. We did send an email, but if he's not, hopefully, he'll be able to watch the replay and see how famous he is for taking care of that fire hydrant. And I just want to say, as the fire chief, that is a great job clearing that hydrant. Plenty of room on all sides for us to work, and hopefully, we never need it. Thank you, Eddie, and thanks for being a good parent to that fire hydrant. Thanks, Bill. Do we have any public comment on agenda items? I don't.
Not at this time.
None at this time? Okay, thank you very much. So we're going to move on to the approval of minutes. Frank?
If there are no objections, I request that the board minutes of December 16th, 2020, and the reorganization meeting minutes of January 4th, 2021 be approved by unanimous consent.
Any objections? Okay, approved by consent. Thank you. Kim, accounts payable?
Yes, I have the bills list for January 13th, 2021, $699,230.78. And I also have the bills list for January 27th, 2021, $871,959.23.
Any objections? Okay, approved by consent. Thank you. We have no public hearings or unfinished business this evening, so we'll go right to new business. And we'll start out with considering a resolution accepting dedication of a portion of the TCG property on Alms House Road and Second Street Pike. Frank?
TCG Realty, the owner of Giuseppe's Restaurant and the Walgreens Shopping Center area, has offered its portion of the connector road between Alms House Road and Second Street Pike for dedication to the township as a public street. This portion of the connector road extends from Alms House Road to the property of Ohav Shalom Synagogue. The remaining portion of the roadway south of the synagogue property extending the Second Street Pike was condemned by the township last year as a public thoroughfare. The connector road was long contemplated by the township as an improvement that would reduce traffic congestion on Second Street Pike, particularly at its intersection with Alms House Road and Newtown Richborough Road, and was a recommended traffic system improvement in the Township Comprehensive Plan and the Richborough Master Plan. Accepting dedication of this portion of the connector road will require the township to maintain the roadway for the future, including paving, snow plowing, drainage-related infrastructure, but its importance of public street far outweighs the cost for these services. In addition to considering dedication of the road, the township is also considering properly naming the connector and establishing a speed limit, parking restrictions, and the location of any stop intersections, if any are deemed necessary. The traffic control regulations will require an amendment to the Township Code of Ordinances. The board has to adopt the resolution to accept dedication of this portion of the connector road and can also consider naming the road at the same time. We have a resolution prepared for this purpose, and it includes accepting dedication and naming the road Addisville Way in recognition of the name given to the area in the early to mid-1700s for the Addisville Reformed Church that was constructed in 1710. Wait a minute. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution R21-5, accepting dedication of the portion of the connector road between Alms House Road and Second Street Pike offered by TCG Realty, and to name the entire road Addisville Way in recognition of the name given to the area by early settlers.
I think we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion, a second. Any additional comment, Frank?
No.
Kim?
Yeah, I talked to our archivist, and I asked her to do a little research about the Addisville name and the Addisville family. The Addisville family was one of the original families to settle in this area. John Addis came to Northampton from Philadelphia around 1719 and purchased two tracts of land totaling 250 acres. According to the history of Bucks County written by William H. Davis in 1905, Addisville was named for one of John Addis's descendants, Amos Addis. This area picked up the name around 1817. And at that time of the writing of Davis's book, Addisville, which he notes as being "properly one village along with Richborough," consisted of 25 dwellings and two churches.
Oh, that's pretty neat. Thanks for the history background. That's pretty cool.
Thank you, Sarah, our archivist.
No, thanks, Sarah. Eileen?
No.
Barry?
No, all good.
No, my only comment is it is exciting to pay a tribute to the past in our township. So that's, that's nice. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a consider an ordinance for advertising establishment of speed limit on Addisville Way from Alms House Road. Barry?
Sure, thanks, Adam. So as with any newly dedicated public street, the township must adopt certain traffic controls to regulate motor vehicle traffic for parking and also propose stop sign. So the administration is recommending that we put the following controls in place, the first being the maximum speed limit, 25 miles per hour, from Alms House Road all the way to Second Street Pike. We also had no parking on both sides of the road for the entire length. And then also add stop signs for motorists traveling east and west adjacent to Giuseppe's Restaurant. What we need to do is advertise this, and I'd like to make a motion to do that if I could.
Please.
I move to authorize the Township Administration to advertise ordinance amending the Township Code at Chapter 15, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, to establish a 25 mile per hour speed limit and prohibit parking on Addisville Way from Alms House Road to Second Street Pike, also establishing two-stop locations, and to schedule public caring to consider adopting the ordinance at the February 24th, 2021 board meeting.
We have a motion and a second. Any comment, Barry?
I'm just very pleased that we're, the township has second control of the road, and I think by putting these controls in place that it's going to be better, better safety for the people, the residents. So.
Sure, thanks. Eileen?
No.
Comment, Kim?
All good.
Frank?
Nothing from me.
None from me. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a consider a resolution authorizing submission and execution of documents to amend the traffic signal permit at Second Street Pike and Schoolhouse Commons. Kim?
Yes, as part of the land development plan approval for the construction of a giant supermarket in the Richborough Plaza Shopping Center, Metro Commercial is required to make certain improvements to the driveway entrance at Second Street Pike. These improvements include a revised shopping center access with the addition of a designated left-turn lane, new handicap curb ramps, and the addition of pedestrian countdown timers to the existing traffic signal. To revise the existing permit plan for these improvements, the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation requires a resolution form from the Board of Supervisors designating an individual to execute Penn dot Form TE160, Application for Traffic Signal Approval, each time the traffic signal permit plan is submitted to the department for review and approval. With that, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
I move to approve Resolution R21-6, authorizing the Township Manager to execute and file Penn dot Form TE160, Application for a Traffic Signal Approval, with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for certain improvements to the intersection of Second Street Pike, Schoolhouse Commons Drive, and the Richborough Plaza Shopping Center entrance.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Kim, anything further?
Nope.
Eileen?
No, sir.
Barry?
No, all good.
Nothing.
Nothing from me. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kim. Next, we have to consider a resolution authorizing submission and execution of documents to amend the school signal flasher permit at East Holland Road near Hillcrest Elementary. Eileen?
Council Rock School District retained McMahon Associates, our traffic engineer, to conduct a study of its school flashing warning devices on East Holland Road at Holland Middle School and Hillcrest Elementary School. Their report indicated a need to revise the Penn dot permit for these warning devices controlling both directions on East Holland Road. The permit amendment includes installing new flasher assemblies, updating time of operation, and eliminating flashing during scheduled holidays and school closings. Although the township is the Penn dot permit holder, the school district will fund the entire cost of the project. We need to pass a resolution authorizing our township manager to execute and submit the appropriate documents to revise the existing permit. May I may read the motion, sir?
Please.
I move to approve Resolution R21-7, authorizing the Township Manager to execute and submit Form 10E-160 to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for permit revisions to the school flashing warning signal on East Holland Road at Holland Middle School through Hillcrest Elementary School.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for discussion. Anything further, Eileen?
No, sir.
Frank?
Nothing.
Kim?
No.
Barry?
No.
None from me. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Eileen, next one for you as well. Resolution for rescinding the snow emergency.
On December 16th at 12:00 PM, we declared a limited state of emergency due to a limited state of emergency due to a snow emergency. This declaration needed to be done to allow the township to authorize hiring of contractors to assist our public works in clearing the streets. The emergency expired on December 17th at 4:00 PM. We need to have a motion to authorize a resolution declaring and repealing this limited state of emergency. May I read the motion?
Please.
I move to approve Resolution R21-8, declaring a limited state of emergency affected 12 hours, 1,200 hours, December 16th, 2020, and ending on December 17th, 2020, at 1,600 hours.
Is there a second?
I'm seconded.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Anything further, Eileen?
I just, when I read, I just took the 16 and the 100 and the 1,200 and made it into time that most people can understand because that was military time.
Gotcha. Kim, anything further?
Yep.
Frank?
Fine.
Barry?
All good.
My only comment is, congratulations again, Eddie Hearn of Richborough for digging out that fire hydrant during that storm. He's a winner. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we'll have liaison reports. But before we do that, just want to remind the public, if you'd like to comment at the end of the meeting during the public comment, please email publiccomment@nhtwp.org, and I will recognize you and open up your microphone. Please put your name and address in the body of the email for the record. If you would just like your comments read, please go ahead and submit an email, no more than 300 words, and I'm happy to read that into the record. First report, Dr. Rose?
Yes, the first thing is the senior center. There are good things to come in 2021. That is the senior center mantra for the new year. The staff is busy planning awesome activities and events for when it's safe for the center to open. In the meantime, there are some virtual senior center activities that have been ongoing. There's the book club with over 16 people participating monthly in interesting and stimulating discussions. This group is facilitated by two of our township's librarians who are very good book club leaders. Another virtual option is the center's coloring club, and a third option is the aerobics class, which has been contained through YouTube. Anybody who's interested, please connect with the senior center if you have any questions or you need any services. The number's 215-357-8199 for more information. And now Parks and Rec. First, I'd like to report that the Holiday Light the Night contest was successful with 30 homes participating and 75 votes. The winner was the Fleby family at 571 Middle Holland Road in Holland. We got great feedback about the holiday event, so we plan to do it again next year. I want to take this time to thank Gilmore and Associates and Gaspur Landscape and Design for sponsoring the holiday events. I would also like to thank Bucks County Women's Chorus, who recorded holiday songs for the caroler stations at the Municipal Park of Cheer, and the Council Rock Staff Girls Scout Council decorated trees in the groves leading up to the Wetzel Pavilion. The music and decorations really made a stroll in the park during the past holiday season something special. As we know, the Parks and Rec staff never stops, even during a pandemic. To suit your personal comfort, select a select menu of in-person classes in addition to the new and exciting virtual programs that are being offered. You can choose the in-person program. Rest assured that the Parks and Rec team has designed protocols that have been put in place at the rec center in accordance with the CDC, Pennsylvania State and Bucks County guidelines to prevent the spread of the virus and for the health and safety of all our participants. But if you're still uncomfortable, there's still more opportunity to participate in classes in your comfort from your home. With that being said, you want to visit the website www.northamptonrec.com to see all that's being offered. Exercise, art, sports, cooking. One class I noticed in this season's brochure, and I'm very excited about, is the Cooking at Home five-star dining series. Park and Rec Department and the Northampton Valley Country Club are working together and have planned these virtual tutorials that feature our very own Chef Jerry and Chef Mike. You will be given a list of ingredients and the step-by-step instructions needed to prepare for selected full course meals. You can pick one, two, three, or all four, and learn how to prepare your appetizer and main course as well, and a scrumptuous dessert. These videos made possible by East Coast Entertainment Group. And it's almost Valentine's Day, so you might want to do that for your, you know, the person you want to entertain on Valentine's Day. Speaking of Valentine's Day, you will also want to register for a Valentine's Day virtual dance party. This virtual dance party will help you celebrate this special day with children you love, dads and daughters, mothers and sons, grandparents and grandchildren. Parks and Rec has it all wrapped up in a special package for you, which includes a 30-minute virtual concert with Silly Joe and interactive children's performer, games, a puzzle, dessert recipes, candy, and kisses, rehearses that is, that you can share with your loved ones. Space is limited, so register soon to receive your special package prior to Valentine's Day. Registration closes on February 10th or earlier if this space is sellout. Just to let you know, there will not be the annual hunting hunt egg adventure, but Parks and Rec is thinking of something, something else special, so check it out. Go to the website. And there will be a summer camp. I'm happy to report that there, we are going to do it this year. The camp will operate similar to how they were conducted last summer with protocols in place. If any changes are permitted, we will be advised by state and local agencies by April, so we're told. We also have just received notice that we'll be able to use the schools this summer, so that will allow us to accommodate a few more children than last summer. However, Council Rock School District reserves the right to amend usage based on COVID restrictions. Enrollment at each site will be limited, so if you are interested in camp, be sure to watch for your emails for information and announcements on the Park and Rec website. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kim. Next up, Frank?
I just tell people that the Veterans Advisory Commission will have its reorganization meeting on February 15th. It will be a Zoom meeting, and we'll be working out the details with the township as to how to get that out, and so that public participation will occur. That's all I have.
Thank you, Frank. Barry?
Yeah, thanks, Adam. Just a couple of things. One is that I'm sure a lot of residents will notice a lot of activity at the Springwell Country Club, as the developer there is proceeding with all the townhouses, so we see a lot of activity there. Then also in Holland, on East Holland Road, we see a lot of development, the Waverly subdivision. So my understanding is that the houses have not come to market yet, but it's a lot of construction activity there. Last thing I want to mention is that last Friday night, my wife and I went to the Northampton Valley Country Club for dinner with friends. We had a wonderful dinner there. And I like to encourage all residents to take advantage of that place. It's a beautiful place to have dinner, very nice people there serving food. As, you know, residents should take advantage of other restaurants in town, too. Right now, a lot of residents are going through tough times, so if people feel comfortable doing it, I would encourage everybody to get out and, you know, try to get away a little bit and maybe go out for an hour to a local restaurant. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Eileen?
Yes, first of all, I would like to also tell what Barry said. The restaurant over at the country club is great, and we don't go there to eat, but we get takeout. And they just came back with their cheesesteak egg rolls, and they're having them this week, and they are the best. And Lori does everything she possibly can to help you out. So take a look. And also, if you can't get out, always order from all of our restaurants, our local places. I mean, that's what, I don't want to cook seven nights a week, so two of them, we go out and call up and sometimes delivery, sometimes my husband picks up, but everyone has been wonderful. So please, we want to make sure our guys stay in business. Also, the library board is going to be meeting on February 25th as a Zoom meeting for our reorg meeting, and it will be on our website with Zoom when it gets closer to that time. When you go to, the library has reopened, but did so on January 18th. And please remember that masks are always required. If you are unable to wear a mask for any reason, the staff will accommodate your needs while you wait outside the library. Their hours are Monday through Thursday, 10:00 to 7:00 PM, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Friday, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM, Saturday, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. For general browsing, there are 10 individuals limited to 30 minutes each, and for computer use, it's 14 individuals limited to 60 minutes each. And of course, they're still having curbside pickup. They're doing an excellent job, and if you do get to go inside, please thank them for working and for making our libraries still wonderful. Thank you very much. That's it.
Thanks, Eileen.
One more. I'm sorry. A thank you to Bill, worked for our new website and our new township alerts. They are amazing. I have gotten township alerts about everything, and it was great. And also, the website is fantastic, very modern. Thank you. That's it now.
You. Thanks, Eileen. I just have a couple of quick items. First, there are still a few open positions on some of the township's volunteer boards and commissions, so keep an eye on the township, the new township website. And sometime in the very near future, an email alert will go out, just letting everybody know which positions are available and the process to apply if you want to be considered for that. Second, I just wanted to say, we talked a little bit about the snow emergency earlier. Just for the public's information, all the emergency services were ready. Everybody was staffed up that day. The police had extra folks in, the ambulance squad was ready, the fire department, all the stations were manned, so we were ready to serve. Unfortunately, we didn't have anything super serious, but your emergency services were at the ready. And last, you know, the most common comment I get to folks about things that are happening around town is I didn't know that that was happening. So I always encourage everybody to go to the township website and sign up for those email alerts. That is the best way to get very up-to-date, real-time information about events that are happening or coming up in the future so that you can be made aware. It's really easy, and there's really no reason to not be informed. So that is all I had tonight. Next, we'll go to the managers' report. Bob?
I have nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Solicitors' report. Joe Pizzo?
Yes, good evening. Records should reflect that the supervisors met twice in executive session this month, once on January 13 and once on January 20. For both sessions, all five members of the Board of Supervisors were present, as was the Township Manager, the Assistant Township Manager, the Township Engineer, and me. During those executive sessions, matters of pending litigation were discussed. No official action was taken in regard to any. And in regard to one of those matters, official action was taken earlier this evening, and that is, oh, geez, lights went out. Power-saving devices. The one item was the dedication of the newly-named Addisville Way. As, as public may recall, sometime in late 2019, the supervisors authorized the condemnation of that portion of the connector road. And earlier last year, the balance of the road, the condemnation was authorized, as Mr. O'Donnell mentioned, by order of the court in December of this past, or by order of the court this past December, that condemnation... court in December of this past, or by order of the court this past December. That condemnation action with TCG Realty, as well as a number of other related matters between the township and TCG, were all resolved by way of the entry of that order and the action tonight by the Board of accepting dedication of the road, which was offered by TCG, effectively wraps up all of that litigation. So the record should reflect that.
Thanks. Anything else, Joe?
No, that's all I have. Pleasant evening, everyone.
Thanks. Jacob, Engineers' report?
I do not have anything to report tonight.
Nothing tonight. And let me just make one last check for any public comment.
We did not receive any public comment.
There is no public comment tonight. So, okay, well, thank you very much, everybody. The meeting is officially adjourned.